Okay, is everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay, so Mike, you want to get started on the subject?
Sure, so I think tonight what we ought to do is carve out a set of goals and expectations for what we do moving forward. The town's finances relative to capital goals.
Recording in progress.
Growth related to responsibilities and possibly talk about the fiscal plan that's been proposed by Baylor Baker and Tilly, sorry about that. So, I mean, I don't know how to start this conversation except to say, everybody knows we're growing. I think we do have growing pains. I think that in the next five years, just to name a few things, we're going to be looking at in the near future, some capital projects that are going to come before us. Marsh Durnall, he needs some body cameras. And we talked to planning and they think we ought to go for a zoning update study. Maybe the body cams cost us a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Zoning updates costs us sixty-five thousand. We need to talk about storm fees. In the next five years, we're probably going to be looking at a new truck to clean the roads we have and the roads we will have. That's about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. He has projects that total one point two million dollars that some of them need to be done right away and some of them ought to be done in the next five to, say, ten years. We're going to need some new personnel when our town grows. And so like the police and the fire, next five, six years, you know, they're probably looking at two to three new staff and planning. I predict they'll be looking at another person within the next five years. And so anybody who's been up Reeves Road knows that we're starting to see some of our secondary roads and streets become heavily traveled. And we're going to need to expand our transportation system, whether it be roads, trails or sidewalks, parks and trails, I could go on and on about that. But the more we have parks and trails, the more we're going to want. And as we grow, we're going to need new pocket trails in some of the communities. So, you know, just to keep up with the times, there's, there's an array of things that we probably ought to be thinking about as it relates to economic development and, and looking at projects and target those development projects. Maybe somebody will mention that sooner or later, we probably ought to have a community center. Who knows how much that might cost us? We can keep it as cheap or make it as nice as we can and spend a little more money. So when you talk about all those things, and that's just a few of the things, we need to have a good fiscal plan. We need to be prepared for opportunities that may come before us to attract businesses that'll allow us to have more jobs in the community, businesses that will have make our assessed value increase dramatically. And sometimes we'll have to partner with these people that want to be part of our community. And we'll have to be able to act quickly, have funds available and, and have a plan that tells us we're going to have funds available in the, in the future. So, I mean, that's what I want to talk about, but I, I don't want to be the one talking. I'd really like everybody else to worry a little with me about our revenues that we have now and what we'll need in the future and tell me what they're thinking. Hello, America.
Well, do you mind if I say something? One of the things has always puzzled me with growth with towns and cities or whatever you want to talk with. As we grow, we should, the revenue should be growing with us. And if it's not, why not? So it's like when we talk about new revenue, and this isn't directed at anybody in particular. When we, I mean, let's be honest, we're talking about taxing our residents. And if the tax rate is equal and cost of things go up, we should be collecting more dollars to afford these things. Because the people are not an unending barrel of money. So I guess I should say, what are we doing or what do we need to do with the town to get it right? So we have a tax rate that pays for this growth without us having to bond stuff out, without having to raise. I mean, I'd like to know what we need to do to fix that because as we grow, and we need more policemen as an example. Well, we should have the AV growth to support that. And if we don't, what do we need to do to get that? Instead of just slacking more taxes on, how do we get the rate correct to get us the growth to where we want to be, I guess is what I'm asking. Because you shouldn't have to tax more to get this stuff done. It should grow along with what we're doing and not just here, anywhere. That's what always baffles me when cities and towns and even states, we need more money. Well, if you need it, why don't you have it? Now, I think we have a spending problem much in Ellisville. I can't say that for state and federal.
Mike, how are we?
Go ahead, go ahead, Trevor.
How are we looking, Mike, as far as the interest? Is the interest still there as far as the voluntary annexations? I mean, are we trending upward on that or is that slowing down? What, what's your outlook on that right now?
Well, we have two large annexations. Hopefully it'll be on the dockets for April and maybe May, just depend on how fast everybody can react. And once those are in place, I think it's going to set the tone and pace for future annexations. We have, sometimes when we annex, we're going to be annexing property that probably won't get developed right away. But it will give, give us a new boundary pass at that where we can grow to the places that do want to rezone or develop or what have you. So I think we have a clear list of people, some of them with pretty nice swaths of acreage that want to annex into town. And I do not think annexation, once we kind of break through here in the next couple of months, I don't think that it will ever quit. And there's no sign that Monroe County's restrictive policies on land use between that and the town running out of developable land for, say, residential, the city of Bloomington, I should say, we're it. And so, you know, I think annexation is just going to be natural for us. And I don't expect us to have to do any kind of aggressive annexation. I think it'll be voluntary and I think as long as the economy holds out. You know, land is so expensive right now and it's, it's value just keeps going up. So people that's never even considered annexing in probably will, just, just out of prudence as far as future considerations for getting money out of the property. I mean, you know, some people in Monroe County's got to live somewhere and so their options are limited unless they go to Ellisville. So I think they look real good.
Yeah.
I mean, the prospect's really good.
So Mike, whatever you talked about, when you talked about annexing that we're talking about like in April, are you talking about like going west or east or right now?
Yeah, west and north will be the first two and one is a large swath of property. And it's a few hundred acres. And then the other one will be a local business. And I just shouldn't wait until the, it's signed to mention anybody's name, but I think everybody will be excited and, and happy about it. And so we have properties to the south along Hart Street that are interested in annexing in. And I think, like I said, I think people right now may not want or need to annex. But as their lives change or situation change or when the, the market gets to a certain point, I think almost everybody will consider annexing into Ellisville where we are more reasonable about how you develop your property. And we'd like to be helpful in, in measured growth and growing the right way. And I just think, you know, we're, we're it. And I don't mean that in any, any, I, I don't, when I say we're it, I just think, you know, we're probably the last best idea for development. So I think it's inevitable.
Mike, going back the other way just a little bit and maybe, William, you may be better suited to answer this than anybody else. You know, we talked a couple of weeks ago, month ago about impact fees, user fees, et cetera. I don't think, if I recall correctly, when, last time I looked at our cash forms as far as what's dispersed to us, that we've taken in any, and I don't think any of the Monroe County food and beverage tax, do we?
So far, we have not.
No, a lot of it, in a lot of it is because, you know, matter of fact, in an example, the amount of property taxes a place like McDonald's pays is astronomical. That McDonald's in the county that's actually in Ellisville is probably three or four million dollar gross unit a year. So seven percent of that, I don't know how much that would be, and then, or one percent of that, sorry. We would get a portion of that. It's just sitting there and we wouldn't get the whole thing, but it's just sitting there. And more importantly, because we don't have enough restaurant volume actually captured in the city, we don't get a voice on where any of this goes. We don't get a seat at the table. I don't know if those restaurants would be enough to put us over the hump. But by God, I'd like to see, I'd like to see if it would get us closer. Right now, it's counting towards the county's portion. It would pull from the county's portion to go to us. So it actually would count double almost for us getting representation.
That's kind of where I was going because, you know, Mike, I agree. I think annexation for us is, it will come to us. The flip side, however, is that there are certain holes, islands, as it were, within the town already we need to address. And one of those is McDonald's. We've talked about it repeatedly. I don't know what's ongoing with it, but there's other businesses and places like that that we, you know, again, should look at because the, like William said, the food and beverage tax could be money coming to the town if we can get over that hump. And when you start looking at, you know, the several developments that are coming in, some of them have already gotten here that frankly have lines from the time they open to the time they close. At a point, we got to be getting close. But what are we doing, if anything, with McDonald's?
I think it's on me to go see the gentleman that owns it and ask him to voluntarily annex. That would be a good start.
Well, the guy that owns it, Abraham, I don't think he owns the land. I think the land's owned by McDonald's Corporation, which may work in our favor.
It's going to be like CVS, I would imagine, because for those of you who weren't on the council's time when we annexed CVS, we sent a letter to their corporate headquarters because they're the property owner. Corporate failed to respond and then we went forward from there. So can we get something done with that, Mike, do you think, in the near term?
And also sooner than later, yeah. I had, I have it on a list of things to do. I just haven't done it.
Along with the other ones that are in, I think there's a couple of them there.
Arby's is one. Can't think of. El Ranchero is in Ellisville, isn't it?
I don't know. Physically, yes, whether it's actually in the limits, I don't know.
What was that, William?
El Ranchero, is it actually in the town limits?
Yes, that plaza is in town except for Arby's and the credit union closest to Arby's. IU Credit Union is in town.
So the Indiana Members Credit Union, I have a feeling they would be very apt to come into town. I really think just a conversation with them. I wish we could have done it when it was still members' choice because that would have been no problem. Could have talked to the person on Patterson because they can, there's just two people.
I'll get Kevin, Talati and myself and we'll get right on that.
If we could just fill in those islands real quick and, you know, and I know this is not necessarily part of the conversation, but it is. When, when William and I were talking about the subject here, what, a month, six weeks ago, there's, what, when we say on twelve, thirteen homes that have just been neglected over time? William, you want to explain a little bit more because you're the one that discovered it?
Yeah, they're actually in the town. It's like a Swiss cheese thing. They're in the town and guess what? They voted for the town. For voting purposes, they vote for the town, but they're not taxed and they're not coded in the town. They're actually county properties. And I can't remember off the top of my head where, but it's just like corners of the streets. There's like three houses here, four houses there. It's not one clump together.
So is that because we didn't annex it or because it's just coded wrong at the county level?
We didn't annex it. Well, I mean, when we drew the boundaries, we never drew those in. But I think the property owners, for all intents and purposes, think they're in the town. I said they vote in the town, but they shouldn't be.
I'm writing it down.
I think Second and River, wasn't that one of the areas, Scott?
Yeah, there's one house somewhere, one or two houses somewhere between where I live and where Chief Corman lives that are also in that same quagmire.
Right, it's, it's not like a whole subdivision or anything like that. It's just a couple of homes.
It's plots.
Yeah, plots, exactly.
Mike, what do you think about in terms of user fees or where, where do you want to see this conversation go?
Well, I don't know. I don't want to be a lightning rod, but I guess I, I need to be. Yeah, I'm thinking that we currently have a pretty good balance in our general fund. But as we move forward, for instance, if we, in five years from now, we have two extra firemen and two extra policemen. Chief, Corman or Marsh Durnall, somebody jump in there. But I think each employee is like eighty or ninety thousand dollars. So that's a reoccurring cost and it keeps going up as the wages go up. And in fact, you know, wages, if we're going to stay competitive, we, we're not going to be able to take our foot off the pedal for raising wages to, to be competitive in the, in the, you know, in, you know, paying people and what have you. But, but if you just take four people times eighty thousand, even, you're talking about a recurring cost of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to your general fund. So that, just one example of how our costs may go up, leads me to believe that, you know, William thinks our AV, if it grows, maybe that would take care of those costs. And I, I am not, I do not have the background that could tell you if that's so, which leads me back to maybe having some professionals look at our, you know, projected costs. And we come up with a ten-year capital plan like we do in utilities. And we put all together all the perceived costs, actual costs, and maybe even the wish lists aside from capital projects that we need to do. And then, you know, then we can form an opinion if we need impact fees, user fees. I can tell you, I absolutely think our storm water fee should increase. We talked about that a few years ago and I think absolutely not was the answer. But for every dollar we raise the stormwater, it puts about fifty thousand dollars more in the stormwater coffers. And with the projects that we have that we need to do and the upkeep, whether it be personnel and especially equipment, I don't think it's unreasonable to be considering things like that. But, you know, I don't kill the messenger, but somebody's got to say our costs are going to increase. And if we do not have a good plan, then we're just going to nickel dime it, kind of like we have in the past where really what we've done in the past, which there's nothing wrong with it, is we've been very frugal and be very careful about making any kind of expenditures. And we tend to choose expenditures that are one-time costs as opposed to reoccurring costs that, that really work, work on our, our monies. And I just think that we are going to have increased needs and we, we need to have a plan. If in fact, you know, we respond to those needs and hire people or do projects or, you know, want to spend matching money for grants for transportation projects. And, you know, I just think that, but I can't gauge what the board wants to do. Like I said, we've been frugal and we've got quite a bit of money in the bank right now. But in utilities, when you have large amounts of money in the bank, it's supposed to be to work to keep improving your infrastructures and, and keeping pace with the growth of your utilities. And so that's where I come from. And that's what, you know, the IURC and IDAM and all these government agencies, they expect you to work your money. And I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that even with the general fund, that same consideration isn't what, what we should be doing. But like I said, I, I have no way to gauge what the board wants to do.
I needed to make it clear, I'm not saying I think our AV is going to keep up to pay that. I'm wanting to know why it doesn't. Because, because it's, no, you can't, again, this isn't just for Ellisville. It's not just a problem we're having, but you can't keep taxing your way out of problems because eventually the taxes are going to get too high for people to have to be able to handle. As an area grows, which would need more resources, you should have the AV growth to pay for that. If you don't, we have to figure out why we don't. And I don't think municipalities spend enough time to figure that out. They're too apt to say, we need to throw another tax on there, another user fee, and not why isn't this growth paying for the, paying for the services it needs. And I think that's what we need to address. Because if you have a thousand people, it should pay for the, for the needs of a thousand people. If that goes through to ten thousand people, then you should have enough funds to be able to get the needs for ten thousand people. You shouldn't have to tax them like it's fifteen thousand people to handle the needs for ten thousand, I guess is what I'm saying. So if we're growing, then we need to figure out, is our mix wrong? Do we have not enough resident, or not enough industrial and commercial, which I think is one of the problems? Do we, are we prioritizing the wrong things? But I don't think we can keep going to the taxpayers and saying, we need this. And honestly, I'm, and again, I, I know people will take this personally, but I'm tired of the state of Indiana telling us we have to spend our money. Debt's not good. I mean, there's no, what are they going to do? Take away our birthday? I think that's worth fighting. Is there some state law that says we have to spend our money? We should be able to save up for these big capital projects. It's almost like it's designed to constantly tax these people into oblivion. And I think that's got to stop. And if this isn't just for me, I mean, I'm not talking about my taxes, but everybody's. And I'm not saying we don't need the money. I'm not saying, Mike, that we don't need to increase fees. I'm not saying that at all, but I'm saying we need to keep pace with the costs we need and not just say, oh, let's raise it fifty bucks and then wait till we're short. Let's raise it a hundred bucks, let's wait till we're short. I won't support anything that's not continually sustainable. But when it comes to saving money, I don't care what the state of Indiana says. I don't know what they're going to, what would they do, Sandy? If we save money for a big capital project, why do they want us to borrow it? Are they owned by the banks or something?
I don't think they encourage us to money. And I mean, we can reserve money by putting it in the rainy day fund. And we can have a large operating balance too. The state holds us to a growth factor every year.
Right, I do know that.
Yeah, so that, your AV goes up.
But not truly what your AV goes up because they only allow you a certain portion of that growth that you can recapture.
Right, now they do give us a little bit of an annexation factor when we do have annexations and that helps. But, you know, we can appeal our levy if we're growing faster than the state because the last two years, our levy has continued to go down. And that's an option to look at.
When's the last we did a levy appeal, Sandy?
It was in the early two thousands, I believe, whenever our operating balance got really low.
Yeah, I remember.
I'd have to look back, yeah.
That was the only time we've done it in the past twenty years.
We did it three years in a row.
Yeah, which, William, too, I will tell you exactly where a lot of this goes. You know, when we try to stay competitive, like for competitive wages and stuff, that eats into a big portion of our money. The reason why I feel we can't stay competitive is for that exact reason. We don't have the AV to stay competitive. So that's why I always bring that up when we start talking about things like that and some of the bigger capital improvements. That's what eats into our pot. So when you say that our AV is going to grow with the people, that's not correct. Because from what we spent now and where we're at right now, if our AV increases a couple of million dollars, you're not going to see a big enough increase to hire two firemen, to hire two policemen. It's got to be something else. And a levy appeal is one way to bring it.
If we need to hire two more people, it means we should have gotten more population. We should have had more growth because we needed those people.
Well, yes, no, because Dan is partially right, but Dan, I kind of take exception with a little bit because in proportion to other cities, you know, we take in what our levy is, just like they take in what their levy is. I mean, I don't know, are you thinking there's some giant pot of money out there that we haven't accessed that we should be? But on the flip side, Sandy, I don't think we're our max levy, are we?
Yeah, I, we're within a few hundred dollars of our maximum levy every year. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, that's the only way we can raise the levy is do a levy appeal. And of course, that raises your taxes in turn, William, so that's not a.
But again, right, we're focused on collection. Why aren't we focused on how to get the money from the AV, how to grow this? Because we are already the second highest AV in the county. This is embarrassing for us, to me. Envision Ellisville doesn't even think it's a problem, but the people coming here and the people I talk to that come here, and I know Pam does too, we see it here all the time, that have the cost of living is high in Ellisville.
Okay, now you're saying AV, do you mean the tax rate?
No, I actually mean, I actually AV, but our tax rate's too high too. Our AV, we need, we want a high AV and the AV is increasing. So our rate, even though it's gone down, we're collecting more.
Yeah, but we also have other people dipping into our pool disproportionate levels to what, say, the city of Bloomington has. You know, because again, it's no fault of their own, but when you throw out their Richland Bean Blossom, they have needs, they have to have too. And if you have a limited pot of money, then they have to take theirs off the top. The other people get off the top, the library, everything else.
I'm talking about just the town rate.
No, I get it, but, you know, again, their rates affect our rates and how much we collect.
That's, that's true.
You know, so when there's needs outside the town, that affects what the town can and can't collect. I'm with you, I don't want to raise taxes other than what we've already got. I mean, we have to keep our levy going where it is. And you're right, we're growing, so we should be taking those things in in proportion to our needs. There's a couple of things that are not. There's a couple of things that are not addressed. I think they get addressed in the long run, because again, let's look at McDonald's. McDonald's, and we're going to use them as an example, will get Ellisville Police Service. They get their roads plowed or whatever else by Ellisville Street Department. They get the repairs done by Ellisville Street Department, yet they don't pay in Ellisville Town Taxes. Because they're not in the now. You know, there are other things we do by cooperation with the county that are needed, so you can't throw stones at that. But again, it's a little bit disproportionate. And again, not throwing stones again, but there are things that Fire Department does, Police Department does, Street Department, everybody does for people to the west of us that we don't ever take any money to, but there's nobody else to do it, so morally, I think it's on us to do it. You're right, the resources is going out the door. I don't know how you equate those things, you know, how you make them equitable in the long run.
And that, that's why, that's why I always think we need to talk about, not saying not do them.
Right.
But we need to figure out kind of, I mean, in a sense, those things need to be baked into the equation. Because they're going to happen, and there's going to be times that they're going to have to come over us if something major happens. And we don't want to get into a contest where we're saying, we're not going to do X, Y, and Z for you. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do those things, I'm just, it it gets, it gets to this thing where we need more user fees, we need, you know, either more money revenue now. And then let's say ten years from now, everything's increased, we're a lot bigger, we're going to need more revenue than what we're taking in, and it comes a point in time where while we're at this level, if we can get sustainable with what we're doing and do this with with that, Sandy, how much in interest do we pay a year approximately, do you know?
I'm sorry, I do not, I can't recite that off the top.
Okay, but can you even ballpark it?
No, I mean, I can see the sheets in front of me for our bonds, but.
I mean, we're talking less than ten thousand, over ten thousand?
Over ten thousand.
Okay, over twenty, you think?
Yes.
Okay, thirty?
Yes.
Forty?
I don't know, we're paying quite.
Let's, let's say thirty. What would thirty thousand dollars a year extra get us if we retire that debt?
Well, right now, our debt is outside the levy, so it doesn't.
Either way, there's thirty thousand dollars that we're paying to somebody else that Ellisville's not getting.
Okay, but if we retire that debt, we aren't going to start getting thirty thousand additional dollars.
No, but if we increased our levy, I did a levy appeal, the the taxpayers would not see an increase of taxes, they'd see the same.
Yeah. If the bond went off, if it was paid off and it went off the tax roll, even though it's outside the levy, that we could appeal to try to keep the levy up and absorb that interest or whatever the payments that we would no longer be paying, and it would have a negative impact. That's what, when we built the town hall, you know.
That's what I'm talking, I think that, these are the out of box things, I think we have to have to think about. I mean, because if we're having these conversations ten, fifteen years from now, when we're fifteen, twenty thousand people, it becomes a lot more complicated. If we have these conversations when we already have a, an animal control department, uh, health department and all these things, it becomes a lot more complicated. If we set the ground, the groundwork now to do it, I I mean, I I don't, I think sky's the limit for us on what we want. Because we'll be able to pay as we go. We're not going to have to sit there and smack our taxpayers every time we want to do something.
So the impact fee would be a good idea in your mind?
Well, is that going, okay.
It would be a one-time fee for on new construction. Um, and I'm just talking from what I've heard in meetings, so I'm not an expert at this, Mike, Mike.
I I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't be completely opposed to that, but I think we need to really talk about retiring our debt. I don't know why we're making people's bank and all these banks giving them a bunch of money, but it could be coming back to our taxpayers in our town.
Well, part of the reason was because when we took out those bonds, is we had immediate needs that we couldn't access.
No, I get that, but that's the same, now is a good time to discuss that. I wouldn't have said that then, we needed it.
Right.
Well, now's the time, we can start paying it down.
I I think one of the issues that, you know, you bring up a a good point to is, you know, paying down debt versus, you know, kind of bankrolling it. I mean, we we've looked at a lot of capital projects that are coming up or potentially coming up, but those are all dependent upon the growth as it goes forward. Sandy, can you walk real quickly, because I'm going to take it off track for a second? Walk everybody through, so everybody understands, where do we get more tax dollars, from the residences or from the businesses? Where's the more income that comes in?
Well, with the circuit breaker, residents can never pay more than one percent of their assessed value. Commercial is three percent. Rental property is two or three. Even agricultural is higher than residential.
Right. So where we're kind of.
Commercial, two percent? And industrial, three percent?
It could be.
Okay.
I know it's a scale.
Where we're falling down, like you said, William, is in our mix.
Right.
We have a lot of residences, but we have not so far been able to lure sufficient businesses here. And I I think one of the things you see, you know, as you and I have discussed with growth, is that as particularly as we push west with residential, there will be things that follow that residential west, just from a, quite frankly, a need standpoint. I mean, God love the grocery store that's local to us, but it it simply can't meet the need. And as you begin to walk west, something else is going to have to go in there. But yet, we've never invested, because we haven't had the money, so it's no one's fault, in somebody that goes out and actually tries to capture business now. B E D C has done that for us to some degree, the Chamber of Commerce has done it from some degree, and Alvin Ginalis was doing it in some degree. But at some point, we've got to become, we have to have a recruiter, I guess, a headhunter, as it were, to go out and try and and sell businesses on why, e- again, say you're looking at a a large grocery store, a large department store, something of that degree, we got to go convince somebody that that's a really good idea somewhere in Ellisville. But the first thing we got to do is have the buildable space for it.
And Scott, I think that's kind of where we started years ago, that we envisioned our planning department moving that direction.
We did.
Correct, don't you remember? Yeah. So, I mean, I think that's where it should start growing. I mean, if we're going to get someone in here like that, which we've discussed this before, someone writing bonds, things like that, I think definitely that's the department they need to head in, instead of creating a whole new department or something like that. Wouldn't you agree?
No, not necessarily. I I think that that person needs to work directly for the town manager, not under one of the departments, because that person needs, for want of a better word, it not be redirected on other projects. That should be their only project is essentially headhunting businesses to locate in Ellisville, trying to figure out where they fit in the pile.
What would something like that be called? I mean, a person, what what job title would that be anyway?
Economic Development Coordinator?
Yeah, maybe, which would fall still underneath planning, like Bloomington. I mean, they do. And I I mean, I don't care where it goes, don't don't get me wrong, I'm not fighting that argument at all, but I just, you know, what, what's the job title and how much does that type of person cost? So.
I I think, I think the job title is whatever you make it, and what does that cost? Well, it depends on what the person you want to do the job wants as a salary. But I think the first thing that I I've heard Mike kind of say, Mike only put words in your mouth, is this council needs to give some direction about where we want to go and what we want to do, because there is no plan. It's just like, everybody just lets it drift forward. So what's the plan, guys?
Well, that's what I'm asking for you right now on this thing.
If I would.
You say, we, go ahead.
I would say we try and afford somebody to go out and headhunt specifically for that, because then they can coordinate a lot of different things as it comes in. That person's job is to bring in economic development to this town, in which turn addresses Williams' need of the assessed value and making the mix correctly. And then you pay for everything, not as you go, because you'll never get to that point, at least not for a long time, but you at least have a stream to pay for things. But right now, I still don't know that we have a plan. What what do we want, Danny? Where do we want to go?
First of all, we need to, like Mike said, we need to get some more property, right? Mike? Farmer?
Well, um, with, you know, I I don't think it hurts to have, especially when we annex agricultural land, I don't think it hurts to, you know, be set up for, have some inventory with land, if you will, uh, for somebody that might want to relocate into Ellisville. And I I think that is the least of our problems. I know we haven't had any big annexations for the last couple, three years. Or I, you know, I don't even know when we have, but I I think that's going to take care of itself. It's not what I'm concerned with, and I'm not sure that, you know, we can be so, you know, it's so easy that we just pay down our debt, and then all of a sudden we have so much money that we can do all these other things. It just doesn't work like that. And in fact, um, our our growth is so rapid and our our needs to stay up with that growth, growth are so rapid, that we need to think out of the box when we do, um, you know, when we do do, uh, projects or hire people or decide to pay down the debt or or any, any of those things, it needs to have a a plan. And and so, you know, the only reason I propose that Baker Tilly uh, be involved with a fiscal plan is because they have all those people that we want in one person, which we're probably not going to get. And and they have all those people to help us put together our plan and make sure we steer clear of financial problems. And so, um, you know, I'd love to have an economic development director. But, um, do we really want to pay somebody eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year? And and can we even get anybody of the caliber that we want? And does that, will they be a financial planner as well and and be able to steer us correctly moving forward? Is that what we want to do?
And Mike, that's kind of what I was getting at, so. I'm sorry.
And if they do it right, just for the. Their ambition will pay for itself. I mean, I I'm not saying, I'm not proposing to do it, because one of the things you hit on, Mike, could we find someone? We wouldn't know after till we sunk one or two years into their salary and found out whether they worked or not. So it's not like there's a guarantee, let's say we think we got somebody, we could have just wasted, you know, two hundred seventy thousand dollars over three years. Now, I get completely, with the Baker and Tilly thing, uh, evaluation, I guess, can we have them focus on growth opportunities instead of, or in addition to? Right, because what what really drives me the wrong way is I keep hearing about how we can grab more money, impact fees, hook on fees. Okay, how do we structure our growth to get the same thing? That's kind of what I'd want to see. Can they do that?
That that's fine, that that's fine, but if 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 I could be so bold that I kind of take offense at the word grab more money, that's not what I want. I'm not interested in raising anybody's taxes.
Mike, I really, I hated to use that term, but I didn't know what else. I I guess I meant from, when they did their presentation, I didn't hear anything about growing our way to afford this stuff. It was all about finding new revenue streams, which is a fancy way of saying, we're going to figure out a way to tax our people. And again, this isn't you, we need the money. I'm not saying we don't. I want a hundred percent agree with you on that. I'm not saying, you know, utilities is wasting money and and it's just, you're just crying wolf. No, we need it. I just want to be creative in the ways to get it without telling our our taxpayers.
I I get that, but there are ways to not have to, um, impact anybody, especially our current residents, a- and that, you know, they involve TIFs and they involve impact fees that only, um, um, impact new starts in the town. And as long as they're, um, created without, you know, stifling development, those are the kind of things I I thought we need to talk about. I don't know any sure it's the right thing to do, but with TIFs, I guess there's as much good as there is bad about TIFs. But if we structure them and make sure that we know what we're talking about, which is part of what I'm asking the board to do is, you know, if if the board knows what all this means and how how to, um, talk about TIFs and bonding and and things where we are going to have to think out of the box and create revenue streams that will allow us to attract the very commercial and industrial maybe, uh, entities that you're talking about that would, you know, bring in more jobs and and create more revenue for the town. It it's just not as simple as, I I I don't think it's as simple as just bide our time and we do this, and then five years later, we do that, and then maybe ten years from now, we do something extra special. I I don't think we, i- if we're going to grow correctly, I don't think we can think like that. And and so tonight, what I'm trying to find out is, one, what's the board want to do? Because we we serve at your pleasure, and number two, um, do you think we might use a little outside help? I mean, the the Baker Tilly proposal has three line items. And for me, I, you know, when we talked to dark department heads today, we had a meeting about this, kind of try to, you know, try to get a consensus what we should tell you. I'm thinking, you know, if we do utilize somebody like Baker Tilly, we probably really want to only go for a fiscal plan right now. And instead of throwing out that it's going to cost us eighty five thousand dollars, I really, for maybe what we need, uh, we need a targeted fiscal plan, just like you say, for development a- and and make sure that's what we're going to get before we we we, um, uh, employ them and go for the thirty five thousand dollar line item to move forward. I I mean, we really need to have a projection of of where we're going to be in five years, and they need to know what we're going to do, how many employees we think we're going to have, what kind of wages are we going to pay them? Do we have, you know, all our our list of, um, of capital projects, they need to know all those and how they even fit. And you know, a lot of stuff's going to go right into trash can, because I know what we, even what we just need is going to be more than we can spend. So it's really complex. Sometimes it's over my head, I can, I got to tell you that. And so a little outside help without buy, without having Baker Tilly become an employee where we pay him eighty thousand dollars a year, um, it just seems like we use them and lose them, and then if we need their help, they tell you how much they're going to charge you per hour to do that. It sounds like a lot of money, but, you know, three years ago, you you guys passed up on the wheel tax, and maybe that's a good idea. I mean, I don't like taxes either, but, um, it was a revenue stream that was a a moderate increase that would have allowed us to use that money for the good of the community. And and we passed on that, so I don't even know, you know, if you want to do any. Because I'm not sure a wheel tax is an ideal either, but.
No, because the thing that we've got to look at, too, we have a different situation going on right now. We have a new administration that seems to be making things harder on everybody. So I just really want us to be careful and keep that in mind. We have three more years of it. And and look what it's doing to everybody, you know, people are trying to struggle now to pay higher groceries, higher gas when they go anywhere. Your electric bills are going up, everything's going up, and I just want us to be cautious and think about the taxpayers.
Well, wouldn't that mean you, wouldn't you like to have a plan then, so we can be cautious?
Right, and I'm with Scott. I'm with Scott on that. We need to shrink it down to focus on something, because if we just throw everything at once, we're not getting nowhere. So I'm like Scott, I would like to see if you wanted to say we need more property, maybe focus on the annexation, and then like Scott said, we need to try to get businesses in here. I would like to see a growth of businesses.
Let me give you an example, if I can, just everybody, give me if interrupted. So a- and again, you'll have to help me with the years, because I don't remember when they were. But when RCA closed, that was a huge hit to not only the county, but the city of Bloomington specifically. So then you had a variety of different entities, redevelopment commission, economic development, sustainability development, have to sit down and figure out what what does Bloomington do to recap? have to sit down and figure out what, what does Bloomington do to recapture what was the world's largest television plant and the taxes associated with? Because while it drew down over time, at a certain point you went from X amount to zero. And that was clearly not good. So somebody, and I don't know who, had the bright idea that, well, we're going to reach out, we're going to try and attack, attract biotech. We're going to set the groundstone for biotech to come in here for, for that industry. And it is an industry to come in there. Now you're looking at Catalent, Cook, Baxter, you know, some smaller ones that are prolifer, proliferating around the community. You know, one of the world's largest producers of some biotech is here. And whoever did that and whatever it took them to not only set the stage for it, but to go out and land those companies and Cook was a huge part of it. You know, kind of having the hometown team on your side certainly helped. But again, guys, we got to figure out as a council, where are we in the world? If there's enough biotech already in Bloomington or Bloomington has space for biotech, where do we fit? What do we offer? Where are we value added to what's going on around us? Or are we just going to take whatever comes? Because quite frankly, guys, ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of this world does not know Ellisville, Indiana exists.
Right. I get people all the time, where's Ellisville? Exactly. I'm outside of Bloomington. I can tell you one thing, Southern Indiana is lacking is commercial warehouse space.
That's where I was going to go, part of it.
Yeah. I mean, uh, uh, Amazon, biggest, biggest warehouse company in the world. Do you realize they have warehouses in Greenwood? And then the next one is in Louisville. And nothing in Southern Indiana.
But we don't have anything right now in inventory big enough to handle an Amazon warehouse. Nor do we have the infrastructure. So what I'm saying, you know, long story short is not only do you go and get that, which Mike I think is doing a really nice job over time of getting people to volunteer to come in. You've got a plan. Where is it going to go? I think we all agree to the West. Then you've got to plan on what's the infrastructure needs because let's be blunt. You know, for an Amazon warehouse, you don't need a whole lot of extra cops. But you're going to need extra firemen if in fact it goes up. So that's where the same structured deal we worked with K Hee. We're going to give you some tax breaks, but on the other hand, you're going to need to put a couple of firefighters on or a firefighter or the equivalent thereof. So we as a council got us, got to determine for Mike and the others to work through this. Where do we exist in this world or where do we see our existence in this world? To the West, I think you and I agree, that's, that's an industrial space, it's light industrial, there should be with some extra retail and eventually homes.
Right.
The East, again, I, I keep saying this and I'll reiterate, nobody, not us, not the city, not the county, nobody does anything right now in that area that we need to do because when the state through Indiana University starts building millions of dollars worth of athletic fields and everything else that draws over a million visitors a year. And yet nobody captures anything right at that interchange. There's nothing there, but there's a bunch of buildable property. What are we doing to attract, you know, the restaurants, the hotels, the whatever else that need to go right there along the interstate? And we don't even have that in our inventory to offer to people. So again, when you look at the city of Bloomington clearly has a feel and a flavor of its own, which is fantastic. Ellisville offers a different feel and flavor, but there's nothing for them to do with Ellisville. So why not take that into our inventory, start trying to attract hotels, start trying to attract other things that are two miles from Indiana University, when you want to go to the athletic games, the athletic fields. You know, when you want to go to graduation, we capture zero of that. We capture very little of what goes up and down highway forty-six every day. Very little. And you're looking at sixty to seventy thousand cars go through there. I bet we don't capture two percent of it. Because we haven't done a good job of trying to figure out where do we fit in this community?
And just on that point, I don't even know if the board wants hotels. We've had a couple of people call us and we had a conference call that didn't go well, but not because of us. But, um, when I start talking to people about putting a hotel in Ellisville, um, uh, my first thought is, well, I might be in Dutch with my board if they don't want that. So, you know.
I'm a hundred percent for hotels.
I agree. Well, because they drag other things with them.
Right. If you get a hotel, they need restaurants, they need gas stations.
Well, we also need update on our zoning. Do you agree with that?
I've been, how long have I been saying that? I've been saying that for a year now.
Okay, so that, that gets back, and that gets back to spending money. We're probably looking at fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars to get a really decent one done. And I heard somebody else say we ought to probably look at our personnel, um, you know, and, and have a study done with that. Let's say that's going to be twenty-five. So now we got like ninety thousand dollars we spent out of our general fund and it's a one-time shot. But with what you wanted to pay down some of our debt, we need to have a plan on how we're going to spend our money, what we want a- and, and what capital projects we think are important to drive our future and attract the kind of people, our businesses and people that we want in our town. So that, there's no plan like that right now. And, and we've got some money in the cash, in, in cash in the, in the bank, but I need no, do you want to spend it and how do you want to spend?
Mike, if I can offer something, at least on my personal thoughts. I would say that we try and designate everything west and you can determine what west is probably Kate he on west. As, you know, zones for light industrial retail, you know, and of course there'll be residential somewhere in that mix. But really look at, as William said, trying to attract not only like the Amazons of the world and the K Hees of the world and other things. There's other shippers out there. There's FedEx, there's UPS, there's other folks that need large warehouse space. And with the, the coming, I guess improvements that are slated for forty-six, that's a natural right off of sixty-nine. And then east, and I really truly want us to go east, um, a- all the way to the city of Bloomington's boundaries. In the fact that that needs to take advantage of the different flavor of that into town, which has to marry up almost like a puzzle piece with what the city's doing and the university's doing and what can we offer there? Well, there that's hotels, that's, that's entertainment venues, that's, you know, restaurants, things like that need to go within that area. We need to concentrate on bringing those things. As far as hotels, yes, I would love to see us have two or three good hotels. You know, not the super high line, three hundred dollar a night hotels. If they want to come, great. But there needs to be something along that path.
And not the hourly rate motels either.
I'm sorry?
Not the hourly rate motels either.
No, no, no. Ellisville has always been, at least when my wife and I moved here, and a bunch of you've heard this story, but I'm going to continue with it. Ellisville is Americana to me. It always has been, you know, good examples, the parade. But I won't go down that road with you just yet. When you look at Ellisville, A- Americana being what it is, what do we offer to support that? We have to have an identity. And, and right now that identity is all over the map. Is it a bedroom community in Bloomington? Okay, if that's where we're all going to be guys, close up shop, we're done. This is as far as we ever get. But I don't think any of us want that. So that Americana that comes with it means supporting what our citizens need, what our citizens desire and taking advantage and working with our other corporate partners, working with our governmental partners and making sure that we're complementing each other, not contradicting each other. I wouldn't want to see us build a bunch of warehouses right at sixty-nine forty-six. That to me is not the best.
That would be waste of, it's not the highest and best use of that property.
Correctly, because it doesn't help the rest of the community, meaning us, the county or the city. But on the other hand, if we can manage that property, we can put in, or we can put in the, the retail, put in the hotel, put in, you know, the other things that would benefit everyone there. Fantastic. Let's do that because it offers a different flavor there as opposed to downtown Bloomington or the far east side.
Well, Scott and the rest of the council then, you know, there's, Mike brings up a good point because we do need the personnel policy, somebody to look over that. We need, we do need the studies that, uh, that we're talking about for, uh, is it Baker and Tilly? Is that who it is? Okay. And, you know, one thing Mike just brought up. I, to me, I think of all that, we've got to get a, I said, we've got to get our zoning in line. And maybe we need someone outside to do that first. Because once we get that done, the pieces of the puzzle and funding will fit, will have a clearer picture of that. Because right now we're playing whack-a-mole with funding. Because if we have zoning right, then we know where to build, then we can have a plan. This is our projected growth based on the zoning. Right now, I mean, we got a hot fudge. Like I said, it, you know, it's sale and, um, temperance at the corner there. We can have apartments with commercial at the bottom. It just makes no sense. Does not fit with anything else downtown Bloomington. But because of the way our zoning is, it can be done by right. Things like that need to be fixed.
Well, this had been, this had been one of my goals tonight is to get somebody, one of the board members to say what you just said. Because I do think that sooner than later, I would like to propose that we, um, um, vote on, uh, putting the funds out there for a, a, a zoning update. Kevin's been talking about that for, I don't know how long he's been talking about it, probably as long as you, William.
This is the first I've heard from the board talking about, you know, a third party doing that. I'm all for that. One thing I also would like to help with the annexation. If there's any realtors listening, if you're, if there's a property or business you're building that's next to Ellisville and it's taking them a long time to get permits and stuff with the county, talk to Mike about getting them, get them into Ellisville. I mean, because that's a real world thing. If, you know, if they're taking a, a six months to a year screwing around with the county and they can be annexed in Ellisville and get it done, I think that would help everybody. Realtor close the deal, the business, uh, open up shop and Ellisville expand. And if we have a plan in place for where those places can go, even better. But no, I, that's my full support. I'm just one of five, but full support of, uh, you know, kind of a comprehensive zoning and consultant for that.
Mike, how long do you think that zoning study or Kevin, whoever will take or any of these studies will take?
Kevin?
Uh, for the zoning and subdivision update, it'd probably take a year.
Yeah, I was going to say several months, but we need to get started on it. If that's what we're going to do, let's get going.
That's where I was going to go, Dan. Whatever we're going to do, we need to do now. We have a stable council right now for essentially another, what, sixteen months, seventeen months? Somewhere in that neighborhood. After that, the component parts may change, they may not. Um, but the vision could also change at that point in time. And we don't want to spend money now, only have it wasted by different vision. Not that that other vision's wrong, it's just different.
Yeah, and which happens to us a lot, which is what I was saying earlier.
I think one of the things we need to do though, and I'll just be really blunt with it, is the fact that right now, because of a lot of factors, the city is willing to work with us on establishing boundaries and, you know, for future annexation. I think it would A, help us clarify our position to the world as to where we intend to go. I think it would help send a message to everyone else that this is where city in Bloomington intends to go. And I think that that would both alleviate a lot of fears from some folks that may or may not be justified at this point. I, I, it's just quite frankly, time for all of us to put our cards on the table, face up and, and put our intents forward. And we need the council, all of us to say, look, this is what we intend to do. So I guess my question about you is, do we intend as a council, as a group, to direct our employees, Mike and everyone else, to begin trying to annex what they can going east and going west? As well as taking in the islands, as it were, that are currently in the middle of us. So there are broader questions, but let's start with that one. So is our direction to our employees to begin to, to attempt annex to the east and west along forty-six and take the islands?
I would say yes.
And, and Scott, I think we've already said that before.
No, we haven't, Dan. So is it yes or no?
Yes, we did. We, we said it earlier this year. But anyways, here's my point though. I, I want to ask this before we get going. And you even went to, uh, the mayor, you and Mike, was it you and Mike?
No, we've never.
You never had a sit-down meeting with the, the mayor of Bloomington about annexations?
About their annexations in hours, yes. We did, but we didn't ever debate boundaries. I'm saying they're willing to work.
That's what I was going to ask you. Where did that meeting go? If you say they're willing to work with us now, what happened in that meeting?
COVID is what happened. COVID and legal cases for annexations. No, Matt, no, Dan, we did meet, but we could never sit down with all of us and decide here's where we're going to go because our council had never decided where we wanted to go.
Well, tha- that's what I'm asking you. And we only met one time.
And it was preliminary. So the, the meeting was preliminary, Dan. And what the meeting is basically established was that yes, we have an interest in annexations. And yes, we have interest in coming up with a boundary. And then we were going to set another meeting after that. And when we got hit with another round of COVID and the city started on their annexation lawsuits. So no, that took up time and it's never been completed, but it's still being talked about. But we as a group need to express to our employees because Mike is asking for direction. And yes, we talked about it, but we've never gone first, first said, yes, this is what I want you to do.
Well, I, I'm confused because I thought we did, but maybe we didn't because.
Honestly, my understanding, we did too. I, I thought we did too, especially with focus on McDonald's and Arby's, getting them in there.
Okay, well, that was my sense. Okay.
Whether we did or not, it wasn't clear.
Sorry. Scott or Mike, either one. Um, I know what's going on with Bloomington, the mayor and all that on his annexation parts. Now, is that going to affect, affect us? I mean, like is mine's going to change because things changed for what he wants? Will that affect us?
To some degree, yes and no, it will. I mean, they, they've already published their annexations, they're going through their, uh, uh, for whatever it's legal needs, uh, because again, before you annex, a- against someone's will or you have certain steps you have to take that are being drawn out by a very confusing set of circumstances that are, as far as I know, have never occurred. And what the exact outcome of those is going to be, I don't know. Does it affect us? Yes and no. Uh, because, and Darley, you could probably chime in here. Even if the city were to either decide not to continue forward with these annexations or lose at this point, there's nothing to say they couldn't come back and either do it or try it again later. But I think it makes, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think they can come back later. I think there's a time limit though, where they have to wait.
Right.
And I'm, it, yeah. So I'm not sure where the waiver issue comes into that. Because I think that's the current legal issue on the table is those waivers. And there may be some dispute as to how the, um, auditor's office is counting those and.
I, I guess my part, Pam, was a- at least it puts our cards on the table, face up that this is as far as we intend to go.
Okay. So here's what I would like to see. This is just my opinion, okay? Since you and Mike have had at least one communication with him, I would like to see you maybe try to get communication again and see what we can do, like you said, going east. Continue that with him. Does that sound good?
No, that's something we can absolutely do. I, I guess I'm just.
Him have had communication one time. I'd like to see you two work together, I guess is what I'm saying, on the communication continuous with him for the east side.
Yeah, we can do that.
Mike, then you can, you've already said you think that we've got stuff going on on the west side, right? Correct? Maybe coming in April for the west area. You're on mute. Michael, you're muted.
I said, yes, we do. And I hope it's for.
So you got that taken care of. So then I would like to see you and Scott continue your talks, maybe set up another meeting since you've only had one and things are changing where you can meet. Maybe you two then work and start going, see what you can do for, for the east side. That's what I'd like to see. But.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. But, uh, you know, I, I feel like we're kind of in the weeds here just a little because my problems sooner than later are going to be money. And I don't say I need any money, but as we annex and, um, move forward, you know, as soon as you annex places like the west side, there's only one good way to get in and out of there. That's, um, forty-six. If we annex, uh, down Flatwoods and across Stars, um, those roads need improvement. And so if that is an area that we think will go light industrial and commercial, um, not unlike key, then, um, I need the board to start thinking about, do they want to maybe, create a TIF district so we can put a couple of lights in down forty-six? And every light we put in puts a corner that anybody nationwide that's, um, like, uh, high-profile business, they would like to be on those corners. So we probably need to talk to Smithville and Darby and see if they're interested in help there. And the Harmones have a farm that would really benefit from a light. And so we need to talk about those things. And that was kind of one of the revenue streams that I, I didn't know if anybody even would want to talk about a TIF or not. So.
Well, Mike, now, let me ask you, do you think we would need to do a TIF to do that? Well, Michael, let me ask you, do you think we would need to do a TIF to do that? Cause my concern with the TIF district, it freezes the AV at the level when we start it. So then that growth, you know, things like the school and all that. If I'm not, if I'm not, I could be wrong, but my understanding is that you know, if the, the, uh, the AV of the area is, again, just using broad numbers, hundred thousand dollars when we started, but we built it up to five million. That stays right in that small area for twenty, thirty years. And so places like the school, they're gonna have that extra, that's not gonna help lower the, it's not really gonna help the town at large, it's just gonna help that little area. Which granted, eventually, long term, will help the town, but can we accomplish the same thing without doing a TIF district? Cause do we really need to keep that money back in that same area? If we're building.
And that, you're right. And, and, and I think you're right. Um, I, I, it's not my expertise at all, but that goes back to why I'm thinking maybe a fiscal plan from people that absolutely have professionals that only talk about and think about things like that, um, would be helpful. So um, I mean, I'm just spitballing here, but that, you know, uh, one thing leads to another and it's all interconnected, whether it's annexation, zoning, uh, revenue streams, improvements to your town, economic development, it's all tied together. And it, and you can't just do it with hopes and, and a couple of conversations. I mean, it takes planning and money and professionals and eventually resources. So I'm, tonight, my goal, one of us to get, get to stay at Ellis to update on. But one of my goals was about what they really want to do. And path take.
Mike, you're freezing up. I'm not hearing anything you're saying.
You're kinda going out, Mike.
Sounded good. Okay, I, I'm sorry. I, I, I don't know what to say.
Tight, tight.
I mean.
I can hear you, Mike, now. It digitized from me right now.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. Everybody does this every once in a while, so.
Oh, I think Scott was saying, and Mike was saying, if I'm not, uh, let me see if I got this right. We may have talked about doing things before, but we never said, here are five things we need you to do, period. I think we said this is something we want you to do, but we didn't give them the marching orders. Isn't that kind of what you're saying, Scott?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Which, I mean, if you're wanting marching orders, then um, is this Baker-Tilly proposal, will that help you? Is that where you're where you're headed? Do you need that approved?
Well, he's gonna need that as a motion and then approval, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, and, 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 and I tabled it because I'm not sure, um, yeah, I just wasn't ready to have you vote on it and.
And see, I, I, I think we need the redevelop, rezoning and redevelopment thing done before that. Cause that's gonna be based on our, where things are gonna fit.
Yeah, but that's gonna put us so far behind the eight ball with changes.
Yeah. A- and like I said, we could have a whole different council by then, too.
Okay, but.
If we're talking.
Mike, how long would the Baker-Tilly thing take?
I think it was several months. I think.
That's still putting us out.
I think four or five months.
And have a completely new zoning plan, everything they have, most of it's not gonna work either.
Well, yes and no, because if, again, William, kind of back to what we were just talking about. If, Mike, help me, if we tell Baker and Tilly our intentions are to do this or to see this here, could they not then kind of guide their path? And there's, you know, you were asking for growth ideas. And then they then say, yes, this is a good idea, put those things there, or no, it's not. And that goes along with your planning and zoning and gets Mike what he needs, while at the same time pushing.
With that, it just, the presentation was mainly talking about added fees and more ways to find revenue with impact fees and things. I did not hear that aspect of the town growth or it was all. I, I guess it was, it was more of a taxpayer thing than it was, I mean, all the ta, all the growth, all the money does have to ultimately come from the taxpayers. But is that adding more to what they pay and not getting them to pay more due to growth? And increasing the tax base. And if we could just change that focus a little bit, I'm really supportive of that.
Yeah, and I don't think they're going to be the people that tell us how to grow.
Right.
I think what they're going to do is, we're gonna tell them how we want to grow and and capital improvements to our town and infrastructure that we want to achieve. And um, they're gonna tell us if we can afford it or not and, 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 and if we really want it, if we think we really need it bad enough, they're gonna give us avenues to look at to make that happen, whether it be bonding, um, impact fees, TIFs. I mean, you know, I, I don't know, know if I'm for TIFs or not. And when you say twenty or thirty years, I'm not for long-term um actions like that that affect people twenty years now that we do right now, that might not be the right thing. But uh, you know, there's a a bit of jumping off the cliff here, um, with some of this stuff. It, and we, and to make sure we jump off with a parachute on, then we have to have professionals help us do it. And so um, the Baker-Tilly proposal, I think, is um, valid. And um, I'm not, you know, I, I need to talk to the department heads against more about that. But we did met, we did achieve something tonight. I, I think we're gonna move forward with the zoning, because there are people looking at properties that, that want to turn them to commercial that are um, embedded in some of the residential areas we have now. And we may not want those, but we may want some kind of light commercial in, in some residential areas. So people don't have to go across town to get this, that or the other. But we have to have good zoning um, for that. So I think we've, you know, if nothing else, we've, we've achieved that. So heck, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of good just because we've done that. So, but the, the Baker-Tilly thing, um, I think you guys need to vet it by asking questions and, and um, maybe we can give you some more better answers later about when and how to do a fiscal plan, but.
Okay, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer. Mike, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but we have ten minutes or nine minutes. So what direction? Scott, do you or Dan and everybody want to maybe set right now so we get started just on something? The direction of, I would like you and Mike, when you get a chance, like I said, I would like you to continue your, your talks on the east side. Um, Mike, what would you like to see? Maybe a direction for you for us to give you tonight?
Something just.
I, I think we're gonna have a proposal.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have a proposal for you for an update on our zoning. And um uh, I, I'm just not sure I have anything else for you. I I mean, we, you know, we do have the ARPA fund.
You're cutting out again. You're cutting out, Mike.
Dan, you froze in.
I can hear you now, Mike.
We can hear you now.
I don't know what to say. Okay, yeah, you were too, Dan, I don't know what was going on.
Okay, do you have enough that input to head in the direction you want to head in tonight is kind of what I want to ask you?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, I just wanted to talk about it and get this um, conversation really going. And we did that. And with, you know, we have a flood mitigation project coming. Um, we have some trail and park um, projects coming at you where you're actually gonna spend that ARPA money. And we're kind of holding back, waiting for that next level trail um, before we really take off with the trails and the parks. But I've been meeting with Denise and Kevin and so, and, and Jimmy. And uh, we, we think we have some grand ideas about um, park areas, uh, especially the Stewart property. And we'll spend some serious money. And, you know, we can't do everything all at the same time, but um, it seems like we need to, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't expect to get a list tonight. What I expected is to have this conversation and make everybody think really hard about where they want to go. You know, how, how um proactive we want to be and how much of a chance do we want to do, you know, when I come to you, you know, for a couple of years in a row and um, maybe our funds go down in the general fund, a couple hundred thousand dollars. I don't want anybody um, uh, putting a boot to my butt saying, what, what are you thinking? But those kind of actions may happen, you know?
Which we like do to you anyway. So, um, I have a question real quick. Um, so is it okay if maybe you get Baker-Tilly back or we can ask them more questions that kind of arose tonight? To see if they can kind of modify um, what their presentation is for us or what they can do? Excuse me, what they can do for us?
Yeah, we did that with the department heads and we, we actually had a meeting Friday morning, a Zoom, and we kind of drilled down on you know, being more specific about what we wanted. And I, I thought it did some good, but uh, the other department heads would have to speak to that, because it shouldn't just be me talking.
Can you uh, give us a copy of what was said or anything? Or did anyone take notes or minutes?
No. Well, and when you guys call me one-on-one, yeah, we can, I could probably talk about, talk about that. You know, I mean, you know, I could go on and on about what, what he did say. It was only a thirty-minute conversation, but he did, we did get to s- some specifics. So I, I really, you know, it really doesn't hurt my feelings when you guys call me and say, hey, I want to talk to you. And you bend my ear for a couple hours, because that's, you know, that's when I can tell you about that and maybe give you that insight that you need, but um, uh, if you don't call me, I'm so busy. I'm not, I, I sometimes won't call you and and I never know when you guys are not busy, so it's easier to call me, because I'm on the job.
Okay, so do you know a direction you're gonna head in right now, before we close?
Yes, I'm going to bed. Just kidding.
One of the thing, I think all of us.
Yeah, I'm okay. I mean, I'm okay. I, I, we just need to have that conversation.
How soon can we expect letters to go out or conversation to have with both McDonald's property and Arby's?
Well, I'll have to say a day and then I'll have to do it. Um, well, I, I'd say today's Monday. How about if we have them out by, before the end of the week?
That sounds good.
I'd be happy with that.
No, that's where I was gonna ask, is what, when, and the rest of the islands, if we can maybe get a report back on those by the first of April, that gives you thirty days?
Yeah, a- and, and truly, I, I'm going to go, I'd like to do it personally, so um, you know, I go through McDonald's every once in a while. And uh, so I may go do it personally, but at the very least, we can get a letter to the locals. And if it needs to go to corporate, then we'll send one to corporate.
Well, I, I've mentioned it to Abraham, the owner. And I've called corporate about it, feeling them out. This is about a year or two ago. That's when I found out McDonald's themselves own the land.
Sure, I can work on that. It's, it's a reasonable request. Let, let me work on it.
Now, Jim is the manager there now. That's his name.
Okay, so Mike, you get that done. You go talk to him, see what you can come up with. And then anybody else have anything to say before we leave?
I, I have some input actually, and I, I may be wrong about this, but as I recall, when we did the CVS, Scott is right, that the property was owned by CVS corporate or whoever, and it was uh, the local business was owned by a local, but she had a contract with the corporation that she was gonna pay the property taxes. So I'm just wondering if McDonald's has the same kind of arrangement.
I'm sure they do.
So I think it would be worthwhile talking to the owner. Um, and I didn't find out all of that about CVS until after the annexation was done, but I'm just wondering if they have a similar agreement.
At the open house, what I did, he just kind of blew it off, but maybe Mike, I took, cause I, at the time, I said we would be talking to him later in the future about it, so. Mike, you can even reference, he probably won't remember. Abraham's not there anymore. He's in um Arkansas, but Jim, I think it's his brother-in-law is there now.
Okay.
All right, so, is anything else before we go off?
Are we having another work session anytime soon?
I think we definitely need one.
I'm thinking we should get Baker and Tilly to a work session instead of a council meeting. And have more of a discussion like this than.
Probably not a bad idea.
I agree.
Yeah. Um, okay, well, be in person, right?
Well, we don't know.
We don't know Friday, right, William?
I agree with Scott. We need to wait and see what goes on. What, Friday? Is it Scott?
They usually come out late Thursday for Friday or Friday morning.
Okay, yeah, let's.
I'm not hearing any rumblings either way, even though the county seems to think the executive order is gonna be rescinded. The General Assembly has not made legislation to continue COVID funds for the state. And I think the governor's waiting on.
While I have you here, I pulled during your break before the work session, your electronic meetings policy. And it does say in the last subsection that members of the public shall be allowed to attend and observe meetings of the town council via electronic means subject to the council's rules for making public comments. So you've already got that incorporated in your policy that you'll allow public comments, even if your meeting is hybrid or totally electronic, um, under the governor's orders.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Good, good, good.
Okay, I guess if there's nothing else, then I guess then we'll see during the meeting. Then, Mike, I'm sure you'll send out emails to us to let us know what's going on.
Okay, I will.
And Mike, I'll try to give you a call tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, good night, everybody.